Brandon Shunk.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Brandon Shunk. I am a member of Boy Scout Troop 432 at the Jonestown American Legion. I am currently working on my Eagle Scout and senior project. I have decided to help the Joy Pantry by donating 1,000 pounds of non-perishable food items. I'm asking the school board for assistance by allowing me to set up a table at the October 26th football game by the admission stand to collect these items. I would like to ask the Northern Lebanon School District if an announcement can be made during the October 19th homecoming football game and social media site to let the community know about this project and help me reach my goal. I plan to have some scouts from my troop and my parents to help me collect food items that night as well. Once we know that everybody has donated, we will pack everything up into my parents' truck and then we'll get the food items for parents to take to the Joy Pantry. I'd like to thank the school board members for allowing me to give this presentation. Do you guys have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move on to the filling the vacant board seat. And if we could have, we have a room up there, we have the people that are going. Okay, Kelly Clark, if you can, they're gonna sit. So Kelly Clark, Travis Byerly, Michelle Bux, and Barry Naum. Then I'm gonna hand this over to Amy Sel.
Thank you, President Gray. We have letters submitted of interest and the candidates are out front for us this evening. The legal requirement of this process is transparency of voting, so we're having this open. A majority of the board must approve the appointment of the board, so we will have a roll call vote this evening for that. Following your two-minute statements, we will open the floor for nominations from the board. There's no second needed for that. President will close nominations. We'll take any public comment in regard to those individuals. And then finally, Mrs. Martin will call for a roll call vote. This evening, we ask that you have the opportunity, our selected candidate will be sworn in by Mrs. Martin, and we ask that you'll come up and join us on the board and participate in our meeting as our additional director this evening. So Mr. Miller has removed his name, so we will start in order of submissions of letters. The first candidate was Lisa McCoy, and unfortunately, due to work, she was unable to make the meeting. I spoke to her today and I told her that I would absolutely accept a two-minute statement, so I'm gonna read that tonight. "I, Lisa McCoy, care about public education as a citizen and as a parent. I've seen how public education is crucial in the lives of four Northern Lebanon School District students, a graduate of 2015, current junior, eighth and first graders. I also understand how excellent schools affect civic pride and the sense of unity in such a diverse place as Northern Lebanon. I believe in the unique possibilities of the NL school system. I've served in my formal communities on multiple boards, coaching and advocating. I have helped to mold and change the culture of multiple community programs, having the ability to think outside of the box and bringing a new outlook on situations or strengths of mine. I've served this and other communities with distinction, recently as an ambassador for the Children's Miracle Network and the Make-A-Wish Foundation, previously as a parent advisor on early intervention board. Additionally, I was a voting member of Catholic Football Association and voting member of the Lord Offen and Cumberland Valley Football Associations. In closing, I bring 20-plus years of professional, personal life and special education experiences. I will work with other board members to create a shared vision for work and learning, build strategic partnerships, sustain the district's progress through continuous improvement, adopt and maintain current policies in written format, maintain strong ethical standards, and objectively seek answers to questions and challenges as they arrive. Thank you for your attention, Lisa McCoy." That was our first candidate. Our second candidate by summons was Kelly Clark. Kelly Clark, you will also have two minutes to speak to the board. You can go up to the microphone. Yes, and President, is it okay? President Gray keeps time for you?
I'm Kelly Clark. I was born and raised here. I went to Lickdale Elementary and was here from seventh to 12th grade. I graduated in 97. I have four sons. My oldest graduated two years ago. I have one in high school, one at Eastern Elementary, and my youngest one will be starting kindergarten next year. I work for Central Dolphin School District as a learning support paraprofessional. I've been there for the past five years. I also serve on a leadership team at our church for Celebrate Recovery. I'm interested in being part of the board. This, I believe that Northern Lebanon has been a great school district for many years. We've been through many challenges the past year or so, but I know that we are more than that. We can work together as a team and let the community see that we are better than what is in the news, because there's been so much negativity out there. So I am just interested in trying to show everybody that we are better than what it has been all over the news.
I'm remiss in mentioning that we also received all the letters, and Mrs. Martin printed those out for our review as well, so just wanted to let everyone know that your letters were also reviewed. Our next candidate that was submitted was in order was Travis Byerly. Mr. Byerly, you will also have two-minute statement.
Good evening. I don't know if I necessarily need this. I'm a bit of a loud speaker. I typically speak. So my name is Travis Byerly. A lot of you do not know me. I do know a few familiar faces. I struggled with the decision to put my name in the running for this position. I've sat along the side. I'm not a Northern Lebanon native. I'm from New Mexico, but a very similar community. So my wife and I chose this community. We had our options at multiple other communities, and we chose specifically to come to Northern Lebanon because it reminded me of the town that I grew up in, the school that I grew up in. With a lot of the things that have happened in the past, I've stood by quietly, but recently, after spending 20 years as an emergency medical services provider, I stepped into a government role, and I waited 20 years to be a process of change. I cannot afford to wait 20 years to be a process of change within Northern Lebanon School District. I have a eighth grader and a fifth grader, so 20 years will not affect them or assist them in the struggles that they're currently facing with the Northern Lebanon School District. I think it's an excellent district. I think there's a lot of potential. I think a lot of focus has been on the negative. We've gotten away from the positive. And I bring to that the challenge to think analytically and be a global view of what's going on to try to offer my suggestions, my support for our kids, for my kids, for your kids, those of you who know me, my boys are evident. I have very little hobbies because it's about my boys. So with that, I thank the board and all of you for the time to stand up here as a stranger and an outsider to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next letter of interest was submitted by Michelle Bux. Dr. Bux?
Thank you. I'm here because I am hopeful for exemplary and visionary leadership in this district. I am hopeful that the academic performance of our district will improve such that we can be a model for other districts to follow. As a member of school board, I will be ready to utilize my experience in education and work as a team to improve Northern Lebanon School District. I graduated from Topahakken High School and went on to college at Penn State Berks Campus. As an undergraduate, I fell in love with scientific research and with teaching. I entered the microbiology and immunology doctoral program at the Penn State College of Medicine. The rigorous graduate training instilled the values of attention to detail, collaboration, communication, strong work ethic, accountability, and evidence-based conclusions. I earned my PhD in microbiology and now serve as an assistant professor of biology at the Hack Harrisburg Campus. I have experience in curriculum development and assessment, online learning, and innovative classroom teaching. I appreciate the severe economic challenges facing all schools, and I understand that teachers need to be heard and supported in order to be effective educators. I am a product of the Pennsylvania Public School System. My children attend Northern Lebanon, and I am proud to educate diverse community college students. I am passionate about the value of quality education for all people. The decisions this school board makes in the coming year are critical. As a member of school board, I will not hesitate to ask hard, thoughtful questions. I will listen and empathize. I will be diligent in considering options and make logical, evidence-based conclusions. I am hopeful, and I will work hard for a brighter future in leadership and academics at Northern Lebanon. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Our last candidate of interest, Barry Naum.
Good evening. My name's Barry Naum. I live here in Fredericksburg. You all know who I am, if you don't know me personally. And judging by the speed at which my name and speculation was transmitted publicly, you may have already made up your decision tonight, but regardless, I'm always going to offer you to serve alongside you if you ask it of me. I do so not without some trepidation, as while I know problems are not what define us, I know there are real problems here. Paramount among these, at least in my view, are discord, factions, broken structures, outright anger and animosity, distrust of each other, and a failure of communication and confidence. I have no great personal desire to become embroiled in any of this, but I do have a genuine sense of professional calling to this district and to this community. And I also know that the way things are and not the way they must be going forward. My motivation for joining this board is therefore primarily a sense of responsibility and duty, but it is also a genuine love for Northern Lebanon. We are at a crossroads, and we all have a choice to make. We can either choose to seek and speak words of negativity, destruction, and death over each other, or we can choose positivity, prosperity, and life. I would strive to only speak life over this board, over our administrators, over our teachers, over our school staff, and especially over our kids. To that end, every decision that I would make as a board member would be based upon what I believe is in the best interest of the academic opportunity and advancement of the students of this district, which I also believe will benefit the whole community. That said, I absolutely have an open mind and an open heart, and will always listen to anyone and everyone for the sake of goodness and life for this district. I would sincerely look forward to working with each of you professionally and with all of you as a board, if you extend the invitation. If not, I will continue to support this district and to speak life over it and to work for life within it wherever and whenever I can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Barry Naum. That concludes our candidate two-minute statements. I'd like to remind the board that we do have one individual missing, Lisa McCoy, although we don't see her sitting there, please consider her as one of the options as well. So our candidates are Lisa McCoy, Kelly Clark, Travis Byerly, Michelle Bux, Barry Naum. I'll open up the floor for nominate, or, yes, open the, you will open the floor for nomination, sorry.
I'd like to open the floor for nominations for the position of new school board candidate.
I would like to nominate Michelle Bux. Like to nominate Barry Naum.
Are there any other nominations? If not, I'll close the nominations. We have a public comment. We'd like to make a comment on. But the board like to now deliberate over the nomination. How many individuals? Quite a group here. I forgot how quiet they were. Wait for a month and it's pretty quiet. Okay, we invited the public comment, so now we'll now take the roll call vote against the under two.
Klein. Erdman.
Bux.
Sikowlik.
Bux.
Murray.
Naum.
England.
Naum.
Brewer.
Michelle Bux.
Sal. Michelle Bux. Gray.
Barry Naum. We've been here before, four-four, right down the middle. So would anybody would like to expound on their reasoning of their vote that maybe sway other members either way?
I guess I decided to vote Naum because he's a familiar face. He's obviously been paying attention. He's been coming to meetings or speaking at a lot of meetings. And I also like the diversity he brings. Somebody who's in a professional field, no offense to everybody up here, but we're heavy on education, and it'd be nice to have a little more representation of other people out there in our community.
Let's bring it up to a vote again.
Erdman.
Bux.
Sikowlik.
Bux.
Murray.
Naum.
England.
Naum.
Brewer.
Michelle Bux.
Sal.
Bux.
Gray.
Naum. Barry Naum, sorry.
Barry Naum.
Oh, I'll keep deliberating. We'll do this two more times. I would like to just caution the board that if we do not, within the 30-day period, the public can petition the court to fill the position for us. So I would like to just piggyback on what Dave Klein said. I know the last time we were four-four, I changed my vote to bring John on. I thought it was a good way of balancing the board and show some give and take. But the person that was in the four-four at that time was also Barry. And I felt that, you know, in balancing it out, I changed my vote to make sure that John got on, and I'd like to kind of see this continue. And certainly, I have the, in listening to Michelle, this is the first time that I've really met you or, you know, I've heard you. And this is certainly nothing, what I'm saying here is nothing against you. I think you would make an awesome board member. It's just that I feel that I wanted Barry last time, and it's just kind of like, I'd like to see him on the board. He does, like I think as mentioned, he gives us a balance that we really do need. We have no, you know, we're, I think I just need that diversity to kind of give us some different angles and thought processes. Somebody else like to bring forth a comment?
I understand the education heavy already, but I find it very refreshing that we have the prospect of furthered education. Seeing the college level need, seeing directly what our students lack when they hit college in a local kind of area is, I think, amazing, an amazing opportunity. I think the professionalism, I mean, it's not a high school teacher. I think the level that it took for her to get to that level is equal to a business. So, I mean, for me, I just love that perspective. I get that we're education heavy, but we're a school board for education in education. So that's the aspect that I really appreciate.
Okay, all right, let's call the vote.
Sikowlik.
Bux.
Murray.
Naum.
England.
Naum.
Brewer.
Michelle Bux.
Sal.
Bux.
Gray.
Naum.
Klein.
Naum.
Erdman.
Bux.
Nice. Four-four.
I know one of the things that I have said last time we were in this situation with a four-four, I said that I think it's really important to think about the general need of the board moving forward. And so I did change my initial. It's not something that I'm interested in doing this evening, but I do want the board to consider what is the candidate that is going to best bring our board together.
Okay, let's try it one more time.
Murray.
Naum.
England.
Naum.
Brewer.
Michelle Bux.
Sal.
Bux.
Gray.
Naum.
Klein.
Naum.
Erdman.
Bux.
Sikowlik.
Bux.
I assume we are now at an impasse. We've tried four times. So we're gonna let it just sit here, and if you want to be visited at the end of the meeting, but if not, the community then has the opportunity to petition the court to fill the board position.
I would like to ask if maybe, I don't know if this ever has been done before, but perhaps allow the people here to put in a vote, and perhaps that would help us. In other words, normally, the people here would be voting for a person. And not that they would, not that we would take what they have necessarily, but that may sway the vote. I don't know. It's a thought.
Do we have any consensus on that? Nate, your thoughts?
I don't think it's necessary.
Is it legal?
Just because.
It's not a county.
It wouldn't be a binding vote. I know, but to give your input.
My thought on the whole thing is.
You know what I mean.
If there was a, and I'm not saying this happened at all, but if there was a preconceived thought that this could happen, and we make sure we get people to come in the audience so we can bring this idea up, I mean, either of these people have town halls. They're here to represent, but it just, I don't, it could be a gray area.
I think protocol would indicate that following procedure, we had opportunity for public comment. We did not receive any public comment. I don't think that we could have public comment take the place, be represented as a vote. I think if we want to do a vote at the end of the meeting, as President Gray recommended, I was, my thought is to open up for public comment again if anybody would like to speak prior to our vote. But I do not wish to deviate from the protocol, the legal protocol.
The last time this happened, wasn't, didn't we take a recess after the fourth vote and people packed up?
Okay, let's take a break.
Five-minute recess.
Well, right now, let's move on to management committee.
Moving on to management committee, looking at the following leave request. Meeting the Northern Lebanon Leave Policy, Rose Marie Kreiser, custodian for intermittent leave on October 2nd, and Kathy Smith, high school physics teacher for leave of absence from October 15th to about November 27th. Any questions? 3.2 is the approval of the following employments for professional substitute list. You can look at that. 3.3 is the classified substitute approval. 3.4 is new employment, approving the following employments. Caitlin May, learning support, emotional support teacher in the middle school, compensation at Bachelor's Step 13 with salary of $46,806. Brittany Lehman, custodian, full-time, eight hours a day, grade S2, $10.10 an hour, effective October 10th. Redesignate, Gail Sensiman, Jonestown PCA, from three hours a day to three hours 30 minutes a day, grade S2, no change in hourly rate. Lisa Kova, in the position of third-grade teacher at Jonestown, compensation at Bachelor plus 24, Step 10, with a yearly salary of $52,262 in accordance with the 18-19 salary schedule. Reba Kinsel, personal care assistant at Jonestown, six hours 20 minutes a day, grade S2, $10.10 an hour, effective October 10th, new position. Any questions on those items? 3.5, part-time director of athletics and supplemental activities. Approved Julie Beidler as part-time director of athletics and supplemental activities, DASA, compensation of $15,000 stipend, prorated, effective August 30th, 2018, to the remainder of school year, fulfilling the vacancy created by the resignation of Tim Bieber. We thank Julie Beidler for stepping up to take that position. Any questions on that? 3.6, re-designation, approving the redesignation of Ed Scotian from Director of Special Services to Assistant Superintendent, effective August 10th, 2018, to the end of October 9th, 2020. This will actually be changed, Mrs. Martin, to be October 9th, 2021, and it's going to be a three-year contract at no additional cost to the district, and that's in line with PA Code, our PA Code. I do have a comment on this. I want to thank Mr. Scotian for his willingness to assume this responsibility of Assistant Superintendent. I'm pleased to have you assume this role, knowing that you have agreed to assume new responsibilities and not, at no cost to the district. So I appreciate that very much. I think that streamlining your title will make it more clear to the public of what your responsibilities are, and I look forward to working with you as a partner with the board. Any other comments about that? Good? Yes, thank you. 3.7, mentors and mentees, approving the following as mentors revised and new for 18-19 school year, compensation as outlined in the bargaining agreement. 3.8, professional development, approved the request from Holly Plummer, health and physical education teacher in the high school, for professional development leave, sabbatical during the 19-20 school year. There are no other items for management. I pass it on to Director. Ruling for programs. Any questions on 4.1? It's the final approval of science applications, sport in society, public speaking, and debate one. Any questions on 4.2? The tentative adoption of American Sign Language 7 and 8 and American Sign Language.
Language.
I do just want to make a comment that, um, these courses were courses that we had talked about, um, I mean, that would happen in, moving forward. I know that there were some additional courses that were submitted, however, we asked that they be taken back to follow the curriculum process that will be put in place this year. So, um, in our meeting, Director Erdman and I requested that those items be removed, um, with hope that the process of following our curriculum cycle, that we first put a process in place before putting, uh, courses on the agenda.
Uh, any questions on four point three? Um, the final adoption of the new textbook, uh, Child Development, Early Stages Through Age Twelve. Any questions on four point four? Approved the request to purchase library books for the middle school at a cost of three thousand, five hundred, twenty dollars and thirty cents, and it's in the budget, so it's not an extra expenditure. Any questions on four point five, field trip requests? Um, these are the ones that are listed, senior class trip to New Jersey and New York City on May 24th. Um, number two, Dan Hass advisor of volunteer club to take students to New York City on Tuesday, December 18th. This is something that they do every year, um, to serve in soup kitchens and to deliver coats and blankets to the homeless. It's a very popular, um, club. And number three, Christie D'Amicoits to take the Spanish club to Spain in June. And the number four, the revised request from Rhonda Sowers, Intuition Chief Book for the environmental and elective earth science classes to travel to Delaware on November 27th through the 29th. And they had to change the date, so we did previously approve this.
And just to clarify, that's, um, the trip to Spain is 2020?
Yes, 2020.
Directors have additional information in their packets about Mr. D'Amicoits actually dropping additional information off in their faculty folders.
Thank you. Any questions on four point six, the winter coaches? Approved the winter coaches and volunteer coaches.
Director Erwin?
Uh, property in service, under five point one, building use requests. Uh, approved the building use request for churches at Jonestown, dance recital, biking youth basketball, Fredericksburg APT, and Northern Lebanon wrestling to use our facilities. Any questions?
I just got a question about, um, who's the, who's accountable or manager, who manages the calendar for all these events now? I know there's been a lot of different parts. Who's the master scheduler for our group? Who's gonna services?
Are, are DASSA and Mason, uh, coordinating, uh, with building requests, if I'm saying that correctly?
Laura Kaiser has all of them scheduled, so when they come in, they go to her first check, keep building availability before they get moved on.
Okay.
So, she makes sure there's no overlap before we all get together and sign on.
And five point two, disposal of items, middle school projectors that are outdated, books and materials no longer needed, and outdated items from the communication room. That's it for us.
There's a information, an information item, the Northern Lebanon Football Booster Club would like to receive official recognition, recognition by the Northern Lebanon School District as the official booster club for both the high school and junior high school football teams. Several meetings were held with parents and bylaws were drawn up and approved on September 4th, 2018. The following week, another meeting was held and an executive board was, was voted on by the parents in attendance. And they have the different president, uh, vice presidents.
I have an additional information item I would like to add. Um, I should have mentioned this earlier when we talked about, um, the changing of title for, um, Mr. Scosson, but I would like the community to hear this so they know moving forward, um, what we're going and doing. I'm very excited about it. We've talked about reorganizing our committee meetings, so we don't have two very similar meetings back-to-back. Um, so, Mr. Scosson talked to, uh, the Director Erdman and I, and we discussed it with the board this evening about reorganizing our meetings with December coming up, that our committee meetings would be more of exactly that committee meetings, where we would have smaller committees. Um, we've listened to the community, where you're looking for that feedback, to have that conversation back and forth versus you standing up there at the microphone and us saying we can't respond to that. Um, so, I'm very excited that, um, already after meeting with Mr. Scosson on Tuesday, we already had response from him today that he's working on that and is prepared to have that moving forward. So, I don't want to put the pressure on you to get that expedited, but, um, we're looking forward to hopefully having that with our reorganization in December. So, I think community members, you're gonna have more of an opportunity to have that working relationship with us. Um, I think it'll make us be much more effective, and I think it'll take these long, drawn-out meetings, um, away where we're leaving feeling frustrated. So, um, I'm really excited about that. So, if you're asking or if people say, what is Mr. Scosson going to be doing differently? He's going to be working really strongly with us as a partner. Another thing is the curriculum process. He's had some things in place and some ideas in place with the curriculum process. As I mentioned earlier, there were some courses that were put on here, um, that hadn't been vetted through the new process moving forward, because we've listened to you with concerns in regard to that, especially at the secondary level. So, um, those are more FYI items, but a lot of times, people aren't here at the board meetings to hear this information, so I encourage you to get out there, get on your social media, and start putting some positive stuff out there, because we are trying to listen.
Oh, we will.
And we're glad to hear, um, these candidates this evening say, we're looking for more positive light for our district, because, um, Northern Lebanon is a great place, and I think we have some great people here, and I'm ready for some change, so. Amen.
Change is good.
All right, well, let's bring back our school, the school board candidates. Let's open it up first, if there's anybody in the, um, in attendance, other than the two candidates that would like to make a public comment on either of their behalfs, to stand up and we hope you will be, uh, recognize you.
Do you want to come up to the mic?
Andrew Mercy, eighteen, twenty-eight, Glassbridge Road, Anville. Um, I thought both candidates spoke well. I definitely enjoyed hearing Mrs. Bucks, and she definitely spoke very well, has some great ideas, and you can tell how she's looking to make a difference in the, with the school board and try and make some change. What you guys did last time, you guys also had the, got a four-four, you guys had some questions, you then asked the candidates and had them come back up. Mr. Brewer and Mr. Nom answered some stuff. I'd say give him another chance, ask him a couple things, go a little deeper. You heard two minutes from someone that you're gonna sit on the board for a while. Give him a little more time, ask him a few more questions, so that he made the right decision.
Yeah.
But I would support Mrs. Bucks.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm, Bray. I do think, just to clear up, we switched this up from the last time to start with, because we started with three questions, and then we allowed them two minutes to explain why they wanted to be on the board. We didn't free ring questions. That would be my only concern with that, is that we've already given that, you know, say what you want to say kind of thing, unless we have questions from a couple months ago?
Is anybody in the chat?
Yeah. Well, then, first of all, do we have anybody else from the, anybody else from that?
I can go to the microphone, I can talk loud. So, I'm, I understand, I'm, I'm an outsider, I'm kind of, basically doesn't show up to board meetings, I showed up to a few in the past, and basically you made me want to beat my head into the wall, so I stopped coming. Um, and so I took the chance, and I thought I'm gonna put myself out there, because who can stand back and gripe and complain about something if they're not willing to enact change?
Yep.
I'm gonna use this as a brief moment, though, to say, I can tell you right now, I work with politicians now, all right? I, I enact legislative change for emergency medical services in this state, and I can read body language, and I can tell you, four of you had your mindset on an individual, four of you had your mindset on another individual. Point of parliamentary procedure is you never have even a number of people voting for something like this, and you have bylaws and you have actions in place so that you have a tiebreaker. Because you guys can go back and forth and make this same vote, all four.
Yep.
You're not gonna change your mind, you're not gonna change yours, and you're not gonna change yours. So, you have one of two options, the point parliamentary procedure. You can either table it for the next meeting, and you can all agree on a tiebreaker that you can discuss amongst yourselves, or you can null out all denominations. You can reopen tables, nominations for candidates, you can revote one time, and if you can't make up your mind, like, big boys and girls, you can close this meeting, and us as a community will petition for the stage to place on one of the seats.
We vote you.
I nominate Travis Byerly.
Integrity right there.
Roll call vote, Mrs. Martin.
England.
Barry Nom.
Brewer.
I still go to Michelle.
Sal.
Byerly.
Bray.
Nom.
Klein.
Nom.
Erdman.
Byerly.
Sekelik.
Do the right thing, what the people want.
Murray.
Nom.
Nom.
One vote. Four Nom, three Byerly.
Nom is the candidate. Can I, can I, can I pause for a second? I know this is the end of the meeting.
No, we have to.
We haven't, okay. Can I just, as we're all continuing to talk, I know there should be a letter formally given prior to announcing, um, you can have my seat, Mr. Byerly. I am resigning effective immediately.
Okay, now we will, um, you can't just give your seat to someone else, it has to be voted on. Um, so, I'm gonna, we will go those forward, and we will now, we will now entertain nominations for the additional board member, um, and put them on. My understanding from Howard is that the board has complete, uh, I mean, we can...
We can appoint anybody at any time.
Anybody.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, yeah.
Just to clarify, the board has the right to appoint in a vacancy of a seat prior to the next election. However, we have tried to maintain it be more of a public process by submitting letters and having this opportunity to hear. Um, so, I think the board is going to reserve its right this evening to make an appointment of the additional member, so, in that case...
I, I agree.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. And that is, uh, before we do that, though, I think, uh, as far as protocol, we should first nominate or swear in our newest board member, so we don't get into a four-four split, okay? So, what's that? Oh, there's seven, now it's not waiting for four. Well, okay. I can be swayed either way, though.
Look, I think he should be allowed to be part of this, since he is...
Do we have the swearing in?
We come forward, raise your right hand, and then speak after me. I do solemnly affirm...
I do solemnly affirm.
That I will obey, support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And that I will discharge the duties...
And that I will discharge the duties...
Of my office with fidelity.
Of my office with fidelity.
Congratulations on that decision.
Now, I'd like to open the floor up for nominations for, uh, Rachel Sekelik's position. Do I have a nomination?
Lisa.
I, I nominate Travis Byerly.
Good choice.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd still like to nominate Michelle. I liked what I heard, and I like her background, I like what she offers when it comes to curriculum. I think that's a strong area of concern in our district.
Are there any other nominations? I'd like to open up, uh, public comment.
That man right there. The one who cares about the kids, cares about the community.
That's right.
Guy who stood up and fought for that position.
Any, any other comments in public?
Come on, the rest of yous.
The board with their, do they like to deliberate on this? Is anybody like any other comments?
I know.
I would like to, to agree with, with John, that it really was, and certainly no, you know, nothing with you, but we were down to the two, and, um, it was, you know, it was really close, so I'm thinking that we really have a very strong candidate, um, in Michelle, and that's obviously we're all pretty loaded. So, there's no other comment? Any other, anyone who can come? If not, let's call the booth.
Brewer.
Michelle.
Sal.
Byerly.
Bray.
Michelle.
Klein.
Byerly.
Erdman.
Byerly.
Murray.
Bucks.
England.
Byerly.
Nom.
Bucks.
I have four Byerly and four Bucks.
May I ask a question? I'm probably out of line. Why were there only two thrown in the pot to begin with? If you had had three, you wouldn't have had a four-four split to begin with. Why were there not three to begin with? I, I think I missed something.
There were only two nominees.
There were only two people.
Two people were only nominated. If, if all three had been nominated, we would have voted on all three.
There was four.
Is that planned?
One was, I think.
Well, it's called. We called them.
Yep.
Mr. Bray, Gail Bevins, 100th Beach Avenue. Uh, I would like to echo, uh, Glenn's comments here, guys. Just not less than thirty minutes ago, you were four-four split here. Um, I think Mr. Byerly spoke, uh, spoke well and everything like that, and inspired some people here with his, uh, his last comments, but I gotta tell you guys, you are four-four split here. You should stick with your four-four split, not, not the current one. You should stick with what you were went with, uh, earlier.
I, I know that I'm new to the board, brand new to the board.
I know that I'm new to the board, brand new to the board. I will say, having been through this process two times, I don't think this is a good process. I don't think this is the right way to find a replacement for a board member. I believe that in the professional world, we go through vetting processes, and I think if anything is necessary at this point, it's a better vetting process than a two-minute public statement and a vote across the board amongst people that already know what they're going to do. My recommendation would be to table this and identify a better vetting process where folks, we have four very fine candidates whose names are out there right now, but we don't know anything beyond a two-minute statement. And unfortunately, you know, less than six minutes for me based on a vetting process. Now, I assure you, I'm going to do my best, but I think we should move forward with a more rational vetting process of finding the next board member. I understand there's a risk of a four-four split, but I think Mr. Byerly spoke wisdom. I think this gentleman spoke wisdom. Sorry, I didn't remember your name, I apologize. But I think there's a better solution than what we're doing right now.
Yeah, you weren't voted in the last time.
We do have the option, I was counting the days as we were going through.
Tell it to me.
We do have the option of tabling this until next week. We will still be with it in our thirty days, and we can possibly come up with some questions and maybe some additional things that we'd like to hear from both members or both candidates. If you'd be willing to come back next week, we can revisit this.
Since a break, do we open it up even more? I mean, I should announce to the public, we have two open spots. That is totally our call, so it's up to you.
Why don't you guys nominate Lisa? She's been here every, all meetings except for this meeting. You know her.
When does the thirty days expire?
No, 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 it was...
You're telling her, she just resigned this month.
Oh, it's already day, I'm sorry, I was looking at the last one. Yep, yep, that's good, yep, thank you.
We really technically haven't.
So we have, we have a full month.
November first. November first, be thirty days.
So we can start the process all over again. Okay. All right, we'll readdress this next week and look at our plans forward for the following, our following month.
We're here.
Okay. There's, there's no other, no other stuff?
Can I just say, I mean, is it something that we should discuss now if we're going to put something in place? I mean, we need to discuss it publicly, is it something we should discuss now?
We can, or if you want, if everybody wants to kind of take a breather and discuss it next week? We have, next week we can discuss it and then the following.
And then put it into, and put whatever we come up with into place, okay?
Put it into play for the following.
What happens next week, we have to vote this tie. Yeah.
What's that?
What happens next week, we have to vote this tie. They don't have votes. But they're bringing all these cases, they just...
We'll just make something else up.
I can't spend another month with an eight. It is so hard to function as a board with eight.
You would think there would be a mechanism in place already.
Yeah, you lost a very good board member tonight because of it.
I mean, how long is this, I mean, this can't be the only place, isn't there like a Robert rules, whatever that is? There has to be a, a mechanism in place that...
I've reviewed the board policy and I can make another recommendation. We have two fine candidates that have been placed before us up for a vote. We could meet again next week with some more directed questions for vetting if we need to, and ask those questions of those same two candidates. That's one route that we could take.
Would that be better for you, Amy? It's my personal opinion. We have been through this process so many times and we are following procedure, what we need to do according to school code. I mean, unfortunately, it is our right just to appoint somebody, but with a four-four, I don't know how that, how we make that process anymore clean. I don't know what additional thirty days is going to be unless we have additional candidates out there, and I don't want to close that opportunity for that. However, we need to function as a board, which just talked earlier this evening about doing some great things with our reorganization and now we're bringing another person on and we're waiting a whole nother month to be able to bring that person on board. Guys, thirty days without being updated on information, my email is going off constantly, we're getting documents all the time, that's a whole nother thirty days that we have to then try to bring somebody up to speed. I want to see us move forward positively and I think leaving an open seat for another thirty days is not in the board's best interest.
Can I just, just so you guys are aware, you would have to vote next week because you, unless you have a special meeting, because by the committee meeting in November, it'll be beyond thirty days. I just wanted you to know that, okay? Because your committee meeting is November fifth, today's October second. So, you know, if you don't vote next week, you'd have to have a special meeting to get within the thirty days.
That's correct.
So I just wanted you guys to know that, just in case anybody, I was sitting here just running the math, okay?
If there are board members that would like questions... If there are board members that would like questions asked for the vetting process, please submit them to me and obviously copy them to the entire board, and then we will air those down to our, like, three, three, so we're not here all night with, you know, twelve, twelve questions or something like that. Can you both make it here next week?
And so, it's just open for these two, correct?
I think we've got, well, I mean, that's up to the board. I'm thinking that these are, these are the two that goes to the top. Will I start all over while you kind of, sort of, these already?
To be fair, although we have asked for, no problem, for maintaining order, I do want to reiterate that Lisa, Lisa is not here in representation, so if someone would like to nominate her name, we would definitely open that up as well. So I just want to make sure to remind everyone that Lisa is not present, so if you would like to nominate Lisa McCoy as an additional person to sit at the table next week, I want to open that opportunity.
I just want to say, like, I think her education background is really beneficial, which is great, but I also think his outspokenness is phenomenal. That is what we need here. We need a voice.
Integrity. That's right.
Nothing against you, but this is what we need. We seriously need a voice of reason around here.
That's what I was going to say.
Can I say something?
Lisa's been here to almost every single meeting. Every time given the chance to talk, she talks. She holds the board accountable, she puts out good ideas, she doesn't just trash and complain, she puts out solutions as well. She would be an awesome board member for you guys. It sucks that she wasn't here tonight because of work, but everyone experiences that. If you guys are voting next week, or even if you're voting this week, I urge you to nominate her because, for one, you see how much she's put out in fighting for what's right in this school and how much for this school district that she's fighting for because you can see it publicly all over social media, and she, you'd be showing the community that you're putting someone on the board that's already fought from out here.
Do we have any other nominations? Then next week, you will have, we'll have a list of questions. This meeting is adjourned.
Which two?